In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Anyone here for public comment? How about any board member reports? Mr. Misari, minutes for November 19, 2018, regular and executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 19, 2018, regular session minutes as written.
Second.
A motion is second by Mr. Misari. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the November 19th executive sessions minutes as written.
I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schultz.
Second.
I have a motion. Second by Mr. Schultz. Any more discussion? Any discussion, I should say. None heard? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Review the FY 2020 revenue and expense plan. Turn it over to Ms. Rourke.
Good evening. So, tonight we're going to briefly review a template that we are just basically starting to work on. We started at the beginning of November to break out some fixed costs between the town and the school. So, to really drill down on those costs and segregate them, you know, and allocate them to the town and the school. So, I will start with saying that, once again, this is just a template and also that the numbers that you'll see under the fixed cost section is basically are not 100 percent, you know, the true numbers. They were, this was a sample and we did our best to come up with estimates. But until we have a full year of data, we can't exactly have an exact number for, say, health insurance. So, we're taking, you know, the average health insurance bill with the average enrollees and then we're doing that out for a year. But, you know, this is just an exercise for us to see how we should proceed and if we should proceed with this template. This was reviewed at the financial planning team with the school department as well at the beginning of November. So, quickly, the top section for revenue has really not changed much. I will point out the areas that have changed. One of the items that you'll see highlighted here is new growth. New growth is highlighted only for the reason that new growth and the tax rate hasn't been set yet. So, this will be updated once the tax rate is set to reflect the numbers that were entered and submitted to the Department of Revenue with part of the tax recap process. So, again, for FY 20, the numbers that you'll see for new growth and debt exclusions, these have been reviewed when we reviewed a five-year revenue plan. So, these have not changed. We reviewed the new growth figure and the increase in new growth last year with the Berry property being sold and Polte Homes and their build-out plan. Going on to state aid, again, these are town meeting state aid figures. They did change very minor once the final state budget was approved. So, those figures you will see updated the next time we review the revenue plan. We have some moderate increases like we do annually for each fiscal year and you'll notice that on this revenue plan, we're only showing FY 19 and FY 20. We're not going out, you know, to 2021, 22, 23, just because this was a template, a rough draft, and just kind of seeing what, you know, would work and how it worked.
If you could, before you go back up, back down there to the chart, the, I think it was further up. No, I'm sorry. Down. My apologies. Keep going.
Yes.
And where was it?
Was it under state aid?
Yeah. Right there. Sorry.
Charter tuition reimbursement?
Yes.
So...
We don't, but that's the one. So, could you just explain again why?
Sure. So, this is actually a new charge that we had just started seeing from, or new reimbursement from the state. So, one of our residents is going to a charter school and the state reimburses us for that. And then on the flip side, we pay a state and county charge as well, a piece of that. So, it's a two-part piece. I don't know how long, I'm not sure if the school department told us what year the student was in. I'm not sure. We can find out more information on that. But, it is a newer revenue. In the grand scheme of things, it is...
But I pointed out because it may, it's in our template today, but it may not be in our template in the next, maybe three years from now.
Correct. Exactly. Yes. Yep. Good point.
Mr. Misari.
Yes.
Liz, I want to go back to the new growth.
Sure.
For a minute. I thought we had talked about under new growth having two lines, one for the normal, regular new growth and one for the Berry, the Polte property.
Sure.
Just so we have some idea of...
Yes. And so, once, as I mentioned, once the tax rate is set, this revenue plan is going to be updated to reflect the tax recap. And Polte is part of the new growth figure for FY 19, represents Polte, and so that is when it will get broken out. There will be a line because we didn't have new growth prior, prior to, for Polte, prior to FY 19.
Understood.
Moving on to local receipts. If you all recall, through last year's budget process, we spoke about the trash fee and we had to increase the trash fee in order to, you know, stay current with what the disposal and recycling and sanitation companies are charging in the market. And we did a one-year extension on our sanitation contracts. So, what we did for FY 19 was the increase over our annual budgeted amount for trash fee, we segregated that increase directly to the sanitation budget. It didn't go into the revenue mix. It didn't get split 66, 34 percent between the school and the towns. And so, for this exercise, we just zeroed it out. And we've talked in financial planning of creating an enterprise fund, which is a self-sustaining fund, similar to the Water Enterprise Fund, the Parks and Racket Enterprise Fund, to creating a sanitation enterprise fund because the trash fee pays for the sanitation budget. And with increasing costs across the nation for disposal and recycling, we feel that this is a direction that we are going to have to go and go to. I don't know that we will do it for FY 20, but just for this exercise, it's been pulled out. So, that's just one area that I wanted to make a note that is different under local receipts. I think we need to have further discussion on it, but it's definitely an area that we need to closely monitor and look at.
But when we zero it out, we talk about zeroing it out, we are not holding the schools harmed. We're making it right with the schools by making adjustments in other areas.
Correct. That is correct. Okay. So, going down to other financing sources, you will note that there are quite a few changes between FY 19 and FY 20. And I will note the areas of where we have pulled out certain revenue sources. So, the debt service stabilization fund, we always have to wait to see, you know, how much we're going to have available from free cash to put into the debt service stabilization fund. We also have to wait to see, you know, how much the snow and ice deficit is going to be, which then makes free cash available if it's under what we have held for free cash to cover the snow and ice deficit. And I also want to note that 1.2 million, a transfer that we made for FY 19, was the max that we could make for FY 19 because the debt service stabilization fund is to pay for debt service or to purchase capital items, similar to what we've discussed with the sale of town-owned land. And our non-exempt debt service budget is just at 1.2 million. The Capital Improvement Planning Committee keeps the debt service pretty level and does not increase, does not want to increase it annually over that amount. So, we cannot go higher than 1.2 million from a transfer out. So, right now, it's at 300,000. That's our, pretty much our starting point for the past two years. Going down, another area that we have reduced would be transfer from cemetery, transfer from perpetual care, transfer from ambulance reserve, transfer from water indirect, and transfer from recreation indirect. Those have all been removed from this exercise and we will see them below. Moving on to page two for expenses, fixed costs. So, some items that have been moved around, we will review, but many of the items that were under this section of fixed costs have stayed as they were. The only piece that is different from this top section would be we had a total employee benefits line under fixed costs in this section, which is calculated below and we'll review that as those are all segregated below. And other employee, other post-employment benefits moved up from the employee benefits detail to fixed costs because that is shared between the town and school. It has to do with current employees and paying for their, you know, post-employment health insurance and life insurance. So, under employee benefits detail, we've broken out what was just listed as county retirement. It's now listed as school and town, county retirement. And you can see the pieces that each, the school and town make up of the total 3.8 million for FY 19. And again, FY 20 is an estimate that we, you know, basically took the 3.8 million and took seven or six and a half percent, I believe, and then broke it out between school and town. Going down as well, school workers' comp, and it should say town workers' comp. We took the total workers' comp and we broke it out by what Maya tells us. They give us an actual breakdown for school and town. And then on the town side, we have to add in public safety, so police and fire to that figure. That's not part of Maya. It's another agency. Town employment security, which is the town's small budget for unemployment. Then we have school health insurance, town health insurance. And in these figures is both active and retirees. And again, these are estimates. The enrollee numbers, you know, do fluctuate, but this is breaking down what it is right now.
So, the reason we tried to take this approach was to try to just dig down a little deeper into the budgets to have a full understanding of all the numbers. And I'll just give you an example is, you know, for the town, we know we have to live within our budgets, down to a line item. And the schools, they get to go to a top line item. So, that means if they find themselves with some extra money within their budget and they want to have the flexibility to hire more people, they certainly can do that. But we also know that, if you could scroll that back up to the top there so we can look at, no, to the school county retirement. You know, we ran into this a little bit last year. They hired someone that we didn't quite see in their budget, but that didn't exceed their budget, but it had a negative effect on the county retirement. So, every time they hire a staff, there is a hit on county retirement. So, we want to make sure we watch that and we control it by, and the same with the town. We stay within what we're budgeting. Mr. Misari.
I think the breakout is a great idea. Is the, are the school related items being moved to the school budget or are they still coming off the top before the budget, as we've done in the past 100 years or so? You following me?
No, I'm not tracking it, but this is...
I understand what you're saying, Bob, and we'll see that on the bottom, there's a breakout, so we'll go over that. Basically, what happens is the school has their total revenue number available prior to these costs and then these costs come out and then they have total available. The same goes for the town.
I guess my question is, in years past...
Yes.
We had, right off the top of the budget, we took all these expenses.
Mm-hmm.
And then what was left was broken to town and school on a percentage basis.
Correct.
Does that remain?
No. So, what is happening now is, in this example, this model, is you'll see that the total revenue amount up here, so if we're looking at, say, FY 19 of the 65,700,000 approximately, round numbers, that 65,7 is then, we take the 10,183, which is right here, which is the, what we're calling fixed costs. That comes off of the 65,700 and then we're splitting the difference. So, I'll show you the calculation below. So, the school and the town start with a higher number, but then we are responsible for these employee benefits details. They're each, they're each...
That was my question.
Yes. So, they're each allocated, but...
Yep.
So, the fixed cost section, which is, you know, the capital improvement plan, the other post-employment benefits, general liability insurance, that is coming off the top, but the employee benefit detail totals are not coming off the top. So, everyone is starting with a higher figure, but every, the town and the school is then responsible for these benefit costs.
For those items directly.
Yes.
So, does that impact the percentage breakdown that the school and the town have been...
You will see, and it's very close. I think it was, was it shy of, we'll see the detail, but it was very close to the 66, 34 percent.
Very close.
Yes.
So, what, what items come right off the top now?
The items like...
Debt service?
So, yes.
But some of the debt service belongs to school.
Yes. So, we talked about...
You pulled that out too?
So, we talked about that. We, we didn't do that for this model.
We didn't drill down that deep.
But we can. We can. We have that break...
We're trying to take it in baby steps, Bob, but we certainly can.
No. Mine is a question, not suggesting what you do.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm just trying to understand what you're doing.
Yes. Debt service, we have it broken out by, you know, general government. We have it exempt school, you know, we have it all broken out, so we could do that, but we weren't deciding to do that in, you know, in this starting point. The same goes for school general liability insurance and town general liability insurance. We have that breakout, what is allocated to the school and what's allocated to the town. Same with retirements. There's a warrant article at every town meeting that's for retirements and we have, that number is for both the town and the school, but we, the school knows what their number is because their employees have to tell them who's retiring. So, they have a figure. So, we could get down to an even more granular level, but for the starting point, we just wanted to kind of get things, you know, templated out and see how things actually worked and see how close it actually was to what the current 66, 34 split is. And it's very close of, to what, what it, you know...
Retirements in the past have been a warrant on it.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Right? And the school doesn't pay a retiree out all in one shot like the town does. I think they do it over a three-year period, so there's a residual carried into the next two years.
Yes. But they know that figure, you know, ahead of time and everything, so, okay. So, moving on, again, school health insurance, town health insurance, school life insurance, town life insurance, school Medicare, town Medicare. Again, these are estimates. We don't have a whole fiscal year, you know, under our belt, but we're basing upon averages and trends. And then we have town public safety disability and town uninsured medical. And then we come down to the distribution. And as I was saying, you have the total general fund revenue of 65,699 and then you're taking the fixed costs, which I mentioned are the debt service, the capital improvement plan, the regional school assessment, the general liability insurance, other post-employment benefits. That is coming off the top, which then leaves 55,500,000 to be split between the town and the school. Then we have the town's total allocation and we have the town's employee benefit costs, which are in red, and they total 4.9 million approximately. Then we have add-backs to the town. The trash fee, which I mentioned, we pulled out. The transfer from cemetery account, which offsets the cemetery operating budget to maintain the cemetery. Same with the transfer from perpetual care. That offsets the cemetery budget to maintain the cemetery. Transfer from ambulance reserve, that offsets the fire department EMS budget to run the ambulances. Transfer from water indirect costs. This is the Water Enterprise Fund paying the town for, you know, processing their payroll, for their health insurance, for their county retirement, for their Medicare. Those type of things are what is an indirect cost. And the same for transfer from recreation indirect costs. So, that's a total of 2.2 million that's added back to the town. And then you can see that we get to total town salaries and expenses. Moving down to the total school allocation, we took the 55 million and gave them 66 percent and then we took their expenses and those totaled 6 million. And that left them with 30,580,000. And their school budget for FY 19 was 30,746. So, it was a difference of 165,796. So, if you see my note here, difference in revenue available to the school, would need to increase their 66 percent to 66 percent to 99. So, it is not that far off of a difference of what we are already doing with the 66, 34 percent split.
Okay. And then in fairness, revenue that has been generated from trash and things like it are going now to be paid 100 percent into trash and they're not part of the 30, 60 percent of the past.
Correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's what we're trying to achieve here. And like I said earlier, and we're also trying to achieve is, if we're going to make decisions within our budgets, we also have to stick within our fixed costs that, you know, before we were all pulled together, but now we can have the insight to where our fixed costs are, where theirs are, and they need to stay within theirs and we need to stay within ours.
So, I'm scratching my head, knowing what you've done and still coming out so close to the school budget. So, what am I missing?
Well, exactly to your point, though, the starting point for total revenue was less than what it really was. So, we pulled out...
So, then the state aid that comes into the town or school, chapter 70.
Mm-hmm.
100 percent of that is allocated to the school budget.
No.
Nope.
We're not proposing that.
We're not. No.
I don't understand the math. Healthy state...
Mr. Gilberto.
So, I believe when you and I looked at the breakdown, there was a significant variance in the benefits and the allocation of benefits that contributed to the kind of balancing out.
Yes.
Maybe that would answer Mr. Misari's question.
Percentage-wise?
Yes.
Yes. So, if we go up to benefits, here we go, employee benefits, maybe it would help if I show you, it is small, but it's... So, our town meeting health insurance budget was 6.1 million and the school makes up 3.8 of that 6.1. So, they have a larger percentage of that piece of the pie. The same thing for county retirement. They have a larger, they have a large percentage, not a larger, but a large percentage.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, Mike and I went through each category to see what the driving force was to make them so close, as well as school Medicare and town Medicare. You can see that they have a larger percentage of the Medicare, overall Medicare budget. So, that's how it comes out so close, is that they, the school, plays a larger percentage in some large budget numbers.
All right. I'll look at this closer.
Please do. We welcome the feedback, but again, we were just trying to look at a different format this year to try to track the, you know, budget to actual as we go through the year and try to stick within our budgets collectively.
So, as far as the school teachers retire?
Yep.
Where is that?
It's not here. It's 100 percent employee paid.
They pay it.
It is not employer-paid.
No.
One thing to keep in mind too, Bob, when you're doing your review, is that if you compare, I think one thing would be important to do would be to maybe take the town meeting warrant, the front page of the revenue, so that you know what our, our starting points were. These numbers here are estimates, but they are based upon three-month averages.
Yeah, the historical data.
Exactly.
I'm not criticizing what has been done so much as trying to understand...
No, no. I understand.
How the numbers came so close.
Right. I'm just saying number-wise, like the 3.792 for FY 19 for school health insurance, at the end of FY 19, that 3.79 could end up being, it could be 3.5, but it could be 3.9. It's just based upon three, a three-month average. You know what I mean? So...
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions? Or Ms. Rourke? Any, end up, go back, look at it, if you have some feedback for us, some suggestions?
Definitely. I would welcome it.
We welcome it. We're just trying to, you know, sort of build better controls, better monitoring, better ways to track things, better way to keep score. And that's what I think we have here. We have a little more insight and try to really control that fixed cost. Now we have a really good handle on the fixed costs, at least I hope we do. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have on the agenda is to review and discuss the potential real estate opportunity at 217 Main Street. I think, I don't think we really have anything this evening, so we're going to pass over that item. And that's going to bring us into licenses and renewals. Mr. O'Leary, you sure you don't need a bottle of water or anything?
This is fine.
Bottle of wine, maybe?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common vittular licenses to expire December 31, 2019, subject to regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Beyond Bagels Inc., Captain Pizza, China Cuisine, Dunkin' Donuts... Andrea's House of Pizza, Beyond Bagels Inc., Captain Pizza, China Cuisine, Dunkin' Donuts Holy Donut, Dunkin' Donuts Shawna Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts No Read, oh, no Red, I had to say No Read, McDonald's Restaurant, Mike's Famous Roast Beef and Pizza, Papagino's, Starbucks Coffee, and Lobster Claw.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Schultz already. Thank you, Mr. Messer. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. I just, a quick question for Jane. Are we missing anybody from that group of licenses that you're waiting on? You got everyone?
No.
No one late?
No, people are late.
No people are late?
No, people are late.
Oh, people are late?
Yeah.
Okay. How many?
And we're also waiting for other things to-
The licenses.
Internally. Internally, we're waiting for-
Yep, okay. Continue to the appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following common bachelor all-alcohol license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. China Cuisine.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Schultz. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following automatic amusement device license to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Andrea's House of Pizza, Papagino's.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mr. Schultz. Any more, any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to get some more here. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Barbara Stats as the State Ethics Liaison for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Motion and second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a class? Do we, the class-one licenses, are they all? Class-one, two, and three, I'm putting at the end because I'll be recusing myself. So I took the liberty of shuffling the deck.
Gotcha.
And I can pass it off to you. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Mary Ann McKay as town treasurer for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment as members of the Conservation Commission for terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and one. Three openings, two people applying, actually, one of the openings would be an unexpired term, correct, Jane?
Yes.
Two openings, so there's two openings. And Tom Romeo's is at the same time, they'll be different dates.
I would have to look.
I believe it's two openings, there's two openings for the full term, and there will be one unexpired term. So, terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and one, Lori Mitchner, incumbent, Jonathan Cody, incumbent.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Liaison, again, we put out a call for some assistance of the Conservation Commission. So the two incumbents here have seeking reappointment, and we appreciate their willingness to serve, but we still have one unexpired term. And since we put the call out, I think we've had three or four people respond, maybe five, which is terrific. So we appreciate it, and at our next meeting, I will be offering a recommendation for filling the unexpired term and may even recommend to the board that we consider some associate members to the commission. But for tonight, Lori Mitchner and Jonathan Cody, both incumbents, and I would recommend their reappointment.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the community for responding to our request and our call for help. Much appreciated. So a motion and a second-
Do a roll call vote on appointments?
Yes.
Mr. Frisco?
Second, I'll report my name so I can write Lori Mitchner and Jonathan Cody. For me, Mrs. Minipelli.
Lori Mitchner and Jonathan Cody.
Mr. Schultz?
Miss Mitchner and Mr. Cody.
Mr. Messer.
Lori Mitchner and Mr. Cody.
Mr. O'Leary.
Lori Mitchner and Jonathan Cody.
Okay. That makes it unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment or appointment to the Hillview Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Two openings, not three, two. George Stack, incumbent, Louis DeFranzo, incumbent, Daniella Claiborne, Peter Antonucci, Robert Gilchrist, David Lee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schultz. Mr. O'Leary? Any comments?
Yes, I'd be recommending the two incumbents, Mr. George Stack and Mr. Louis DeFranzo. Mr. Stack has been the, he's been on the commission since inception, approximately thirty years. Served as chairman numerous times, is the current chairman, and is passionate about the Hillview Commission, and has done a fantastic job, and deserves reappointment. Mr. DeFranzo, just completed his first term for three years. He's an attorney, and through the negotiations of the new contract, negotiations with the cards, golf cards and all the rest, his service has been invaluable, and again, would recommend his reappointment.
So these are only two-year terms?
No, they're three-year terms. There should be three.
Well, it says December, maybe I'm doing the wrong math. December thirty-first.
Thirty-first, nineteen twenty-one.
It says two thousand and twenty, but-
It should be twenty-one.
It should be twenty-one, I believe. So if you want to maybe modify the motion?
Yes, indeed. Again, Mr. Chairman, it describes this error, so that move to place a nomination of the following names for appointment, reappointment to the Hillview Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Two openings.
Gotcha. Second.
Motion and a second. And we already got the names, so there's a roll call vote. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Stack and Mr. DeFranzo.
Mr. Messer.
Mr. Stack and Mr. DeFranzo.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Stack and Mrs. DeFranzo.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Mr. Stack and Mr. DeFranzo.
And the chair votes, Mr. Stack and Mr. DeFranzo, thank you for your continued service. Gentlemen, we appreciate it, and the course, I think, was the best I've ever seen in all the years I've been in town this year, so it's certainly going in the right direction.
Thank you. Not without challenges and the commission as a whole, particularly these two members, but the commission as a whole has-
But the investments they've made, and I know that was difficult for them to make them, but they're paying dividends, so, thank you.
Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following names for reappointment or appointment as member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. There's one opening. Joseph Keys, the incumbent, Matthew D'Angelo, Laura Matolo, Clancy Mayne, Stephen Lecty, Ahmed Subarani, Mark DiSimone, and Kerry Antonuccio.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'll defer to the liaison.
Yep. I would recommend Mr. Keys, who's the incumbent, an attorney in town, and has been on the board for a number of years.
It's a roll call vote. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Keys.
Mr. Messer?
Mr. Keys.
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Keys.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Mr. Keys.
And the chair is going to vote Clancy Mayne.
Mr. Chairman, at this point in time, I will turn the following motions to be made over to Mr. Schultz. This is for class-one, class-two, and class-three licenses, automobile licenses. Like the record to show that I will be recusing myself from any discussion and will be abstaining of the vote, as I have a family member who holds a class-two license, and therefore I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class-one licenses to expire January one, two thousand and twenty, subject to all regulatory department requirements. That's Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And one abstention.
A class-two license. Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class-two licenses to expire January one, two thousand and twenty, subject to all regulatory department requirements. A&amp;J Motors, Inc., Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales, and P&amp;T Auto Sales.
I have a motion, I have a second by Mr. Messer. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
And one abstention. Four in favor, one abstention. Class-three.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the following class-three license to expire January one, two thousand and nineteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements. Brian Duchak, DBA National Sales.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Messer. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. And then, that's it, we go to legal bills, right?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for October two thousand and eighteen in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents as follows. Copeland Page, PC General, eight thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Copeland Page, PC Labor, one thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars, total ten thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Approve and sign the integrated contract, the firefighters' local one-eight-five-seven. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this is an integrated contract which takes the terms from the most recent memorandum of agreement between the town and the union, which was ratified almost a year ago in December of two thousand and seventeen. Takes those terms and makes them part of the actual contract between the town and the union. Provides a single point where all of the changes that were made in that last MOA memorandum of agreement can be made part of the overall contract. My recommendation to the board would be to ratify and sign.
Okay. We have a motion in the packet, I believe?
We do.
Mr. Chairman, I move to ratify and sign the integrated contract between the Town of North Reading and the North Reading Firefighters Local eighteen fifty-seven for the period July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
I have a motion and I have a second by Mrs. Minipelli. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Through you, just to make clear, there are no new benefits or wage adjustments included in this agreement. Those changes were implemented after the memorandum of agreement was approved last December.
So this is purely administrative?
Correct.
In structure, okay. So I have a motion and I have a second. Any more discussion? Yes.
I voted against the initial ratification of the memorandum of agreement, so therefore I will not be voting in favor of this motion. However, that being said, I am extremely pleased that we have it integrated in one document, and I applaud the administration's effort and the union's effort for coming together and getting together with an integrated agreement.
And I think Mr. Collins put a tremendous amount of time into this as well, I believe.
That's correct. He and Chief Stats.
Thank you. Nope, it's a great effort, and I'm glad we're in a routine of doing that, because we've seen that come back and cause some administrative challenges for us in the past, so I thank both the town folks and the union folks for getting that done. So if I don't have any more comments, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
No. Four to one.
By the way, Mr. Chairman, there are two copies for the members to sign. I'll pass them around.
Thank you. And next, I think we have the town administration's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Curbside yard waste collection occurred this past Saturday, December first, and will occur again on Saturday, December fifteenth. Information is up on the website, and I attached it to my report as well. I will note for the public, for the curbside yard waste pickup on Saturday, the fifteenth, all items must be curbside by six-thirty a.m. We also extended yard waste drop-off due to the late, the early snowfall, excuse me, and late end of the yard waste cleanup season through this past weekend. We were open both Saturday and Sunday, the regular hours, but the facility is now closed for the season. There is one remaining opportunity to get rid of yard waste, and that is through the curbside pickup a week from this coming Saturday. As was mentioned earlier, there is an urgent need for Conservation Commission candidates. I did provide a notice for the town website and put it, submitted it to the transcript as well. I appreciate their assistance, and we're very pleased with the response that's come back. Again, for anybody who is interested, or anybody who's further interested, please contact my office at nine-seven-eight-three-five-seven-five-two-two-five. If you wish to learn more about the commission itself, please contact the Conservation Office at nine-seven-eight-three-five-seven-five-two-forty-seven. The meetings are generally the second Tuesday of the month at six o'clock p.m. at Town Hall. Residents are reminded that Town Hall will be open until six o'clock p.m. on Monday, December seventeenth. The library will open at nine o'clock a.m. that day. Town Hall, the library, and the senior center will be closed on Monday and Tuesday, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, and observance of Christmas. I wish to recognize Adam Johnson upon his swearing-in as a North Reading police officer. I included information relative to Officer Johnson's background. He comes to us from the University of Massachusetts at Boston where he was a police officer. And finally, I was honored to attend the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Jacob Ancre, Rudy Carlson, Daniel Mannion, and Maxwell Murphy on Saturday, November twenty-fourth. Each of the individuals was presented a certificate of recognition on behalf of the board, and congratulations to them. Thank you for their efforts and support of our community. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Just a question or request, I should say. So with the upcoming holidays falling on a Tuesday, and I assume that's going to have a change in our, and I know this has been posted once before regarding the trash pickup. So-
Yes. So trash pickup, assuming there's no weather interruption, would be delayed one day. So it normally occurs on Tuesday. Would, in this case, be Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, January first that are in question? It would be delayed one day to Wednesday, Wednesday, December twenty-sixth, and Wednesday, January second. All items must be curbside by six-thirty a.m.
So it'd be good if we made sure we got the push on the news and announcements from our town website out to folks, letting them know that, just refresh their memories. And I also think we need some kind of a public statement on, now the winter's here, in the event that we run into a snowstorm during the time that we have trash pickup. If your trash doesn't get picked up, we have to make sure we communicate. We had a lot of lessons learned from last winter, and I just want folks to remember to leave their trash out there. If they missed you, they're going to come back most, right, they're going to come back the next day. That's what happened last year. I just think maybe we need to have a public announcement on that, an official announcement from maybe the DPW director, just so the public knows, you know, once, if they don't get the trash picked up on a Tuesday normally because of the snow impact, it'll be picked up on a Wednesday or the day following.
Mr. Chairman, through you, happy to talk with the director about getting some publicity out there on it. I can't stress enough, if your trash is not collected, it's very important to contact the Department of Public Works to let us know that it in fact has not been corrected. There's a number of ways you can reach the Town Hall, but the phone number that will get you to the administrative office of the DPW is nine-seven-eight-three-five-seven-five-two-two-seven. It's very important, and I know in this day and age, email is a great way to communicate, but the most efficient way for us to get the information and get it over to JRM so that they're logging and we are aware of the missed areas is that phone call. And certainly, leave a message if you don't reach somebody. Sometimes the phones can be overwhelmed, that there's a big stretch of space that's missed by JRM, but I really encourage folks to, A, place that phone call, and B, leave it curbside.
Yeah.
That's the second most important thing. That way, no one has to endure the frustration- That's the second most important thing, that way, no one has to endure the frustration of, the truck drives by and your trash is not curbside and therefore doesn't get picked up. This is the most difficult time of year for us, it's, it starts with the challenges associated with it getting dark so early, so the day is by definition shortened for JRM to get the work done in town, and then, secondly, the heavier volume of trash in particular associated with holiday celebrations and then exchange of gifts just really taxes the resources, so I really, you know, I appreciate you bringing that up, I think it's very important. One thing I will note, and this is going to come up in a future discussion, is we have gotten a lot of feedback from the industry that for a successor contract, we should expect to be looking at multiple days of pickup in town, and by that, I mean, certain, depending upon your geographic area, you would have potentially a different day than perhaps another geographic area might be. But one of the benefits of that is it gives us another bite at the apple, so to speak, to address any missed pickups, because JRM is back in town again, so that is a benefit that will help, that we expect would help alleviate some of the challenges, but again, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, it's important, and we'll do our best, I know, Mr. Schultz and I, we try to monitor what's happening in North Reading, our social media site, so folks have questions. We try to do our best at answering them, but you are spot on, if they can make the phone call, it's certainly a greater help than us trying to do it through social media.
Sure.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. O'Leary?
First of all, I'd like to note the passing of a former town employee, Lois Chikorick, longtime public servant in the Department of Public Works, retired a few years back, but a true lady and wonderful woman, wonderful employee, and great member, contributing member of the community here, and she just passed away this Sunday, so I want to offer condolences to her family, and I know that there are a lot of employees in Town Hall that used to work with Lois, it'll be sad, sad to hear that she passed. The only other thing is, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if it's time for us to take a look at the plastic bag situation in town, the banning of plastic bags. I mean, we haven't really addressed the situation, but it appears, based upon my recent shopping around the area, that a lot of the communities around us, and a lot of communities throughout the Commonwealth, are addressing the situation, and I've already implemented a plastic bag ban, and I think environmentally, I mean, part of the problem with our recycling here is that people put it in the recycling, and it's a problem with recycling plants, along with environmentally, it's not a, not a good idea. So, maybe it's time for a New Year's resolution, where we should charge the administration with the task of at least surveying what other communities around us have done, how they've implemented it, and the impact, but I mean, I know a lot of the local chain stores, area, regional stores, some communities have the plastic bag bans and others do not, so it's, I just think it's time for us to take a look at it.
I'm certainly very familiar with it, owning a business in the city, and we have to implement it.
And that's coming in, you're right.
Oh, it's, it's effective, so-
It's effective now, right?
We have, we have a little grace period right now, and we also have the ability to use what we've already purchased, which is good, but it's coming. The good part of it is, yes, it's, it's good for the environment, the very negative part is, especially on the small businesses, it's extremely expensive. My bags are costing me at least 13 cents a bag now, and, you know, those costs in our community are going to have to get passed on to the consumers, but I understand, it's for the greater good, but I certainly think that we should, I've been waiting for the subject to come around, I assume at some point it would come around. I'm not so sure I'm bought in on it, because I've, I'm seeing it from a different perspective, but it's certainly something that has to probably get addressed, because it's happening across the whole country. But I certainly would hope that everyone would take, and just, you know, try to step back from it and look at it from an economic standpoint for our small businesses, this will be an impact, any way you look at it, but if you certainly want to take the lead on it, and I'm sure the town administrator, amongst the budgets and everything else we have going on, maybe you could take up, I mean, I, there's so many communities I think implemented around us, and it's got to be at least four I know of right now, but I certainly like the idea of, you know, brushing off what somebody else has already created, and that we take it from there and maybe fine tune it to fit our community. No need to reinvent the wheel on it, it's everywhere. Matter of fact, I believe Brad Jones' office has some information on, on this as well, that I would probably start there, because I believe several of his communities have already implemented it, as a suggestion.
No, I just figured I'd bring it up and see what the consensus of the board was, whether we want to, charge the administration with looking into it or not. I for one, think it's, it's time.
More than doing it, Mrs. Minipelli?
I, I'm not sure, I don't know that.
Reading is.
Reading is.
Because I wanted to stop and jump Reading and walk down with paper bags and everything fell out of my bag, up all bags, that's, so I'm personally not a fan of it, I think it hurt the small business and-
No, you can have plastic, you can, but they're very expensive.
The reusable bags, I mean, I use the reusable bags, we go to Market Basket, you know, so I mean, Market Basket and Middleton, you know, isn't subject to it, but we bring our reusable bags anyway, Reading is-
I just don't, yeah.
I just think the cost gets passed on to the little guy, that's where, you know-
But they're forced to pass it on to the consumer, and the consumers do, they do get upset, there's no doubt, I mean, 13 cents on top of everything else, but-
And the consumers are also going to have to deal with the environmental impact of, you know, continued use.
Great. Anything else?
Well, I don't know, do we have a consensus yet or not? No?
Oh, sorry, yes, Mr. Messeri.
I think that waiting for discussions or whatever options we have for trash pickup will provide us some information, and we should wait and see what our options are there before we make any other changes.
Okay, Mrs. Minipelli?
I think it's a good idea to move forward with it. We already know it's impacting everything from the ability to recycle, to the cost factor, to the fact that it doesn't degrade, and it's a lousy product anyway, your groceries fall all over the place in the plastic bags, and out of them anyway, but-
Yeah, and as far as the new trash contract isn't going to have any impact as to, as to the, the use of plastic bags, because we can't recycle.
Actually, it may help us, if we implement it before then, they actually may look upon it even more favorably in our pricing, because now they know what they're picking up, they know that certain things are going to be outlawed in the Town of North Reading-
They're not going to be included in-
And they're not going to have to address it when it gets to their facility, so I actually think the opposite of it. I hate to say it, I know, Mr. Gilberto, you and your staff have a tremendous amount going on, especially it's budget season, and mixed of all the other things that we're doing, but I think it, it's a very logical thing to look into now, prior to signing on or sending out an RFP for any trash, I think this is probably the right time to do it, and it certainly, I think, will be more favorable to us with the contractor, so. Okay, so, I think that you got the majority of the board-
Sure.
Would like you to, you know, kick the tires on this and see if you can bring us back some information, and you certainly have plenty of communities around you that can share the information, and I, again, I do believe Brad Jones' office has some really good information on this.
Thank you, yeah, so we'll follow up through DPW to see what options we have available to us.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up, Mr. O'Leary, that's very good. Mr. Messeri?
Just an update on water sewer, our next meeting is Wednesday, the next Wednesday at 1:00. Focus has been on trying to nail down the location for the chlorine dispensing for Main Street, because without having that location, they can't file the FEIR, so that's focused. We're going to get back in contact with the handovers, start talking about sewer, they've been kind of predisposed with their gas crisis, so we hope to get that started soon.
That's great, that's great progress, and it's really good news, and I hope that it comes to fruition, I think the, getting, the biggest hurdle is getting them to have a warm feeling towards the idea, that's, that's a good progress.
We've got to keep the pressure on, getting the FEIR.
Yeah, absolutely, and if there's anything we can do, anyone else in the board to help, because we know your hands are full, both of you, so we appreciate it, let us know. Anything else, Mr. Messeri?
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz?
There's a couple of Thanksgiving-ish things, first of all, congratulations to all the turkey trotters that went out there, and it had to be eight-degree weather and the winds were howling, and they still got about 700 people that went out and ran it, so that was great. And also, I want to thank the business community for lighting up Main Street, and also the Business Committee Chamber of Commerce for lighting up the common, they had their ceremony on Thanksgiving Sunday, and they had a live nativity scene there, and all kinds of stuff for kids, and another great event, everything looks nice in town.
And congratulating the Hornets on their win on Thanksgiving Day.
Yes.
Big win, big win.
Easy win.
Taking back Turkeys, that's good.
I suppose, too.
Anything else?
No.
Ms. Minipelli?
Yeah, I would just echo that, I think that the turkey trots are so well organized, and even for those of us late registering for the walking portion, they still, you could still go in, I think, a couple of days before to register, so it's just always well organized, it was freezing cold, and, but it was still fun, and it was a really great turnout for them despite the cold temperature, so, well done, job well done.
I only have one thing, and it kind of goes along a little bit with what we were talking about during the Town Administrators Report, is I just want to remind the community that our plow drivers, whether they're DPW workers or organic staff, sorry, organic staff, or contractors that we bring in, please be patient with them and understand that, you know, I get a lot of complaints at this time of year where snow gets in front of people's driveways, or people get extra snow in their cul-de-sacs, and, you know, we all understand, but I hope people know in the community, and I can't emphasize this enough, they're not out there to do it on purpose, they don't have anywhere else to put the snow, and I'm going to ask the community this year, more than ever, to rally around our contractors, try to accommodate them the best you can, if you see them out there, believe me, they've probably been out there for 14, 18 hours, throw them a wave, if we can be a little more kindly and friendlier towards our plow drivers, it'll just make this whole thing a lot easier. We had a real challenge this year, we had a hard time getting contractors to come and work in the community, and we take a tremendous amount of pride in our roads and keeping them clear, so our residents can get out to their appointments and live their lives, and I think we do it better than any other community, and as you know, if you heard us back here, we already voted several months ago about increasing the rate to attract more contractors, but we also need to become a little friendlier community in regards to having respect for our plow drivers, they do, cut them a little bit of slack, and trust me when I tell you, they're not out there to upset people and plow in front of your driveways, as much as you may think it, it's not true, it's a challenging job, and so I just ask that we try to emphasize a little care this year in this 2018-19 season of snow, and that's all I have for this evening, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Second. Motion is second by Mr. Schultz, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.